President.
President.
Harold.
President.
Aralandu.
Here.
Ah, breaking the rule. All right, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, since, is there anybody that couldn't make it last night, wanted to come tonight for public comment? Holly?
No.
Okay, spare everyone that. And then our only item of tonight, reports item three point one, overview of BPS 101 alignment with the board's strategic plan. Tom?
All right, so, uh, board, we'll have it posted up here, but I emailed you if you want to go in your email, a revised version because we need to finish merging some of our slides in the deck. So, that'll, that version that I emailed you that we'll be walking through tonight will be used as part of our minutes when we're done with the meeting tonight. All right, so the most updated version will be available to the public. All right? All right, so, um, this presentation tonight, similar to what you saw in the May board meeting with our principals and our buildings, this is a follow-up to the district's December presentation that was done as a mid-year check-in where, where we were, right? With some of the data points. And this is the first year, similar to what our buildings were doing. This is the first year we're doing this, at, at the very least in the two years I've been here, uh, in terms of a presentation for the board and the community about different metric points. And this is tailored around different data we collect as a district. Some of it is reported to the state of Illinois, it's part of ISB, some of it will be like internal data that we use such as our map results, you know, and that's critical still to the process we have internally for our schools and our students. And so, as we move forward tonight, I want to thank everybody who's here and, and everybody on, on my team that helped put this presentation together. I think that's really it, so, without any start off questions, if there aren't any, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over and we'll start getting through the presentation.
All right.
Okay, awesome.
All right, board, so you, I'm up first on deck here, and then we'll get to some of the more operational pieces, but we'll talk about the academics. Some of this information is updated and some of it's not, so, our kids are exposed to a lot of, of testing by the state of Illinois in the spring, but we don't get those results until late summer, so, we don't have a lot of that data to update, so, you'll get that in the fall when we share that with you around the school report card. So, it is forthcoming, so I'll try and note that, but at any time stop me if you have any questions, and we can kind of go through this. I can explain as, in as much detail as you want, or as little as well. So, just, you know, kind of referencing back to our strategic plan, this is how we're organizing. It's given us a common language, a common focus, that's really helped us to look at the data, I think, in a, a way that makes sense and can really drive improvement. So, I'm going to talk really about the first two of those, and then we have a lot of people that will talk about the three. So, priority one is enhancing those teaching and learning practices, using that, those instructional strategies that are going to make a difference for our kids. And then there's a list of metrics that are in your strategic plan, uh, that kind of guide us as to what to look at. I think, looking at all of these, you can kind of get lost, or you can make it tell any story you want. So, um, I think it's important to look at all of this, to look at it in a number of different ways, but to me, the most important thing is like, what do we do with this information, right? We're about action, we're about doing things for our kids, so we have to find a way to make sense of the data, look for trends in the data so that we can act and make kids' lives better. I'm going to start with this one here, um, just to look at some internal metrics. So, this is the MAP test, our students and grades, K through eight take this test three times a year. It's a computer adaptive test, so there's about forty-three questions. And computer adaptive means you can have a, a shorter assessment, but get the accuracy of a longer assessment. So, computer adaptive means it will give a kid a question, and if a student gets that question right, it gives them a harder question. The computer always wants the kid to get the answer wrong, because then it knows how to adjust and what to look at. So, um, our students will sit down, so if you have a child that takes the MAP test, they might get a question right, another question right, and then they might get a question that is not even in their grade level standards. So, you have a third grader, and they start getting questions about multiplying fractions, well, that's not a third grade standard, but they might get that because the computer's seeing how far can this child go. So, it allows us to have shorter assessments, um, which is, is really great, because we don't take up as much instructional time. So, you can see in this slide here, on the left-hand side, uh, as I'm looking at it, is the number of students who are proficient. And then on the right-hand side is students who met their projected growth. So, based on your grade level, based on where you're starting, you can't, your, the MAP test gives you a growth target. Now, the growth target is for you to stay at the same national percentile. So, a first grader is going to be expected to grow maybe twenty RIT points, which is their little scale that they measure the MAP test on, but an eighth grader may just need to stay the same two points, because growth slows down over time. So, it's looking at what are the national trends, they have about, uh, eight million students who take this test nationwide, so they have pretty good norms to look at. So, what I, when I look at this particular slide, I see that our students are more proficient in math, the red line, than they are the blue line. And we're getting more students proficient in math, and more students meeting their growth targets in math. And reading is kind of stagnated, and I talked to, I gave a little highlight of this last night, um, our, our reading is a little bit stagnant. We're seeing some growth, but not as much as we would like. This is a nationally normed test, so, there's a huge population that we're looking at and comparing ourselves to, um, but we're looking for a growth over time. Here is broken down by some of the categories that we have to look at, some of our demographic categories. These two particular slides are on reading, both the proficiency of reading, and then the growth of reading, and you can see that we're pretty stagnant there. So, it's telling, telling me the same story, going a little bit up, a little bit down, but not really getting the growth that we're going to want for our populations. Kind of a highlight is, you can see on the right-hand side, EL, English learner growth and IEP growth are on the rise, and that's not a, a one-year thing. So, I think that's a, a good thing for us, is to take a look at what we're doing in those two particular areas and capitalizing on that. Questions so far? Here's the same two slides, but for math.
One question, Brad.
Yeah.
Do you have a sense like that discrepancy between the district and the other, uh, groups? Is that, like, other districts, uh, how, is that about the same gap that you see, or?
Yeah, every district that I interact with nationally, these are the trends as well, is that you have those achievement gaps. Math, so if you look at coming out of COVID, the national research around that, we're not any different than the national research, and what it's telling is that math growth, kids are recovering in math faster than they are in reading. Reading's a really complex behavior, it actually uses about seven different parts of the brain in order to read something. It's a visual spatial process of making meaning, it's not a very natural process for the brain actually to read, but it's something that is really important for our students. So, that's why last night, you guys approving those field test materials is really important to us, so we can get back, uh, that growth for our students.
The new curriculum that we talked about last night, that is elementary school level though, right?
That's elementary school.
So, kids that were kindergartners when COVID started are going into middle school. Is there a plan for getting, how to get them caught up to where they should be?
Yeah, I, I wouldn't say kids are like behind, they're just not growing as much as we would like. So, the ELA SALT team has a secondary team. This year, we only had two middle school, two high schools teachers on it, so we're trying to get more voice on that team for next year. And they're looking at what their next steps are in that process to make sure. It's kind of, when we're at unit districts, it's like, where do you start? You start in the middle with middle school and work your way up and down, you start at elementary. We've done different things over the years, so with, with elementary math, which we're looking at these slides now, we're seeing really good results, but we were seeing a stagnation at the middle school, which is why we worked with that team, that math team at the middle school. That's why we approved the EM squared math materials, because we're looking to accelerate and keep going with that growth, and align with that growth that we're seeing at the elementary school. But here you can see, you can see all those, uh, changes over time, pretty positive. I would actually say rock star positive, like that's, our staff should be commended for those math scores.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's really important to note, uh, this is a tremendous result. While math may be the area, the top, subject area that, um, nationally you see the trend having a quicker recovery for students, for us to see this level of delta or change in results in a positive direction is, is pretty significant. And, and as Brad has pointed out, I mean, I really, really applaud the efforts that everyone has made to, to do that, and I think that's part of the reason why you heard at the last month's meeting, if you remember, all the principals were like, we had a reading goal, but we didn't want to leave out math, right? Because they were really proud of the accomplishment they had in, in the math growth there, so. I really, this is, um, this is really actually pretty significant data.
At twenty-two percent growth and?
Yeah, it's, it, it's tremendous work.
Yeah, that's pretty amazing.
So, besides the curriculum, um, for the math, what, any other thoughts on why, how we're achieving?
We put PD time into it, teachers need time to get comfortable with the, the resources and the materials, right? So, I was a high school teacher, so I was lucky, I got to teach things twice or multiple times a year, sometimes four times, uh, three times a day, and then multiple times over the course of the year, so I could refine my lessons and get better pretty quickly. Elementary teachers get one shot at it, most middle school teachers get one shot at it because of, um, the way that they, their year is. So, at the high school with the block schedule, I got to teach it multiple times and get better at it quicker. So, I think like they need multiple reps with those materials, practice with those materials before they're really coming, and you can see kind of that acceleration. So, PD, uh, PLCs are working on this within the schools, they're looking at their data over time. We also have more robust, like, check-ins, assessments along the way in math than we do in ELA, something that we're going to try and remedy. So, a teacher can know, almost like every day or every week, how a student is progressing with those skills.
Yeah, one of the things, when I was the, um, AGS rep, I was able to go, you know, and visit, uh, their STEM club, and they have kindergarten, first graders, uh, you know, in that, doing activities in that club. So, I, I guess I'm trying to see if, do you think those are making an impact, or we, like, those type of extracurricular activities, clubs, besides just what's happening on the curriculum and teaching level?
Yeah, I, I do think that has an impact, because kids need conceptual thinking, right? Mathmatic is more than just solving equations, it's really about conceptual thinking. And I think STEM and those activities that kids are engaged in, robotics, uh, computer science, all of those pieces, take what they're doing maybe in a classroom and make it more real and conceptual. So, I do think there's an impact from some of those pieces that, that they're experiencing. I don't know if I could prove that in a research study, but that's my hard work for it. This slide is not updated, but IAR is our, our state assessment that we look at once a year. I'm hoping the state gets a little faster with getting us our results back. Same thing with, with this slide, this is old data, remember we've transitioned from SAT to ACT? And I have some beginning data here, you're going to probably want to look at this on your screen, just because there's a lot there. But this is kind of hot off the presses, and I want to start at the bottom corner, just to kind of explaining the benchmarks. So, ACT, um, for years, has conducted research around their assessment, and what they have done is, literally millions of data points, they look to see what ACT score translates into a C or better in freshman year college classes. So, they said, in that case, an eighteen on your English test, a twenty-two on your reading test, those combined with your writing is a twenty, in math, a twenty-two, science, a twenty-three, in STEM, which is your science and math combined, a little bit higher there. So, those combinations are a little newer to the, the assessment, but you can see in this chart that, um, overall, we're seeing some gaps with those students who have IEPs, LIIs, low income indicator, and then EL, English learners. So, we see gaps between those proficiencies, this is our first year of data with the ACT, so I'm really interested to see how this progresses over time, and if we can close some of those gaps, so, that's part of the high school's work in looking at that. Questions about ACT? So, those are percentage of students who've met those college readiness benchmarks. This freshman on track data, which is to me a really important piece of data, we're, we're very high for this, uh, that won't come out till October. EL exit rates, again, this is probably something you want to look at on your screen. How I look at this data is, the students who are identified for EL services, they, um, receive extra supports throughout their school day, whether that's native language instruction, um, culture instruction, um, all of those pieces go into our EL services, both bilingual and, um, EL services, ESL services. And when a student starts with us in kindergarten, really our goal is that they exit EL services, which means they have shown proficiency in listening, speaking, writing, all of the components of the English language at a, a level where they're going to be able to access academic language. So, many of our students, um, whose homes speak other languages, they very rapidly pick up conversational language, but it takes a little bit longer to pick up academic language. So, that's really important, is that they're able to pick up academic language, because that's really going to fuel their growth. And we don't see knowing two languages as a deficit, we see that as an asset, and we, what we see is that there's, they kind of rise in their proficiency a little bit slower than the general population, but then they go really fast in terms of accelerating. So, because they have all of these assets of knowing two languages. So, the, kind of the target for me to look at is fourth and fifth grade. Are we exiting students in fourth and fifth grade is a really important metric. So, taking a look at that, we will update this data when we get that data, but as a board member, I would be looking at fourth and fifth grade exit rates, because those are important. We don't want students languishing in EL services, we want to give them the supports that they need and exit them from EL services.
So, on that, is that percentage of overall EL at that grade level? Or is that over, percentage of overall EL? Like in, I'm just trying to make sure I understand what the percent is tied to.
That's the percent of students exiting.
Right, that exit?
Yeah.
The percentage of that is?
Of the students at that particular grade.
At grade.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, good question.
So, the ones that are in the later grades, is it, are a lot of those, they've come in, they didn't necessarily start in kindergarten?
Hopefully not, right? Like, that's something that my team monitors, is we don't want students staying in it for all twelve years, right? That would be, to me, a failure on our part, is to make sure that they're not getting enough support to give them that academic language so that they can, um, do it without that support more independently. The test does change at the, the middle school and high school, you can see, sixth and seventh grade exit rates are never going to be high. It's a national trend with the WEATA standards, um, so we're looking at, at those pieces as well. Our EL team has done a lot of work recently, um, to really capitalize on, um, what our students' strengths are, and then fill in some of those areas that they struggle. So, one of the areas that they struggled, that team looked at the data and put together an improvement plan for themselves around writing, because writing is a really complex skill that students really need to be successful, especially in the older grades. So, they put together an improvement plan for writing, and then, um, have really implemented that, because we saw with their access scores, writing was one of the lowest things. So, they're able to speak it, they're able to listen, be able to read English, but they were really struggling with that writing piece. So, I'm, I'm really happy with the way that they've improved over time. This again, you probably want to look at on your screen, it's not updated data, but we do look at, um, students in their courses in the fall. I'll look at this data again, because I want to make sure that we're not putting up any systematic barriers to our students getting into higher level classes. So, on the left-hand side there is high ability, so we have that in fourth and fifth grade for math. I want to make sure I'm not locking kids out of fourth and fifth grade high ability math. We can see some highlights in there of, of things, we've, as a team, implemented some different processes to make sure we're finding the right kids for that program and not excluding kids. RMS honors ELA and advanced math is something we look at, and then AP and dual credit at the high school. So, when a kid's able to do that, so I wrote my dissertation like a million years ago, and I studied growth through the high school years, and I found what everyone else has found, so nothing earth-shattering here, so I don't recommend reading my dissertation. But it really just said, when we put kids in higher level classes, doesn't matter what grade they get, they get better, because they're rising to those challenges. So, we always want to put kids in the highest level course that they can take, because that's going to yield the most growth for them. So, a lot of kids are like, I don't know if I'm ready for an honors class, yes, you are, let's go, we can do this. So, with minimal supports, they can be really successful, and they can, we can see their growth over time.
I have a question.
Yeah.
About that slide. So, the male female ratio of grades four to five, it looks like it's evening out, like there's more?
Yeah.
Females, but then when they get to RMS, we're not seeing that?
Not yet.
Is there a reason for that?
There's more selection, there's more choices at the middle school, and more choices at the high school. So, we start to see, this is a national phenomenon too, is that girls in seventh grade start to opt out of math and science. So, I participated in some, uh, research study group with the University of Indiana, because all, all the districts in the, in the country are looking for, why are we missing representation of females, of minorities in STEM-related fields? And we all see that it starts in seventh grade. So, our students, female students in particular, opting out of math and science, higher levels of math and science, something we want to turn around.
So, I think it goes back to, there's a, uh, if you recall from Dr. Smith's presentation, a lot of that comes back to what students shared was, when I was asked to, it made me feel like I could and go, I would go do it, right? And I think that goes back to where, we'll get into priority two, uh, but, when you talk about academics and learning and teaching, and then also the sense of belonging and the relationships that exists in the buildings, those aren't exclusive of each other, right? Like, a student's self-efficacy as a learner is also tied to how do they feel in school, how do they feel with their peers, how do they feel with their adult relationships? It all kind of has a, it has a, uh, relationship to each other and how it can affect each other. One of the things I've always noted is, I believe with how strong our EdPathways program is, and Brad will talk to that early, later, you know, it, when we talk about teacher recruitment, one of the most impactful, um, programming that a district can do to improve who they want teaching in their buildings, is to tap into your own future pipeline for a teacher program. But what we have to do as in, as adults, is use our relationships with kids and leverage that and say, hey, you should, Tom, you should think about becoming a teacher. We have these classes, you can get a jump start on college credits, like, it's really about identifying those, and that's part of the reason why we had talked about the middle school counselor addition, is that we really want to, to that point that's being discussed right now, we want students to start thinking about their, their futures, even at the middle school level, and what the, what do those career pathways look like? And if they identify something, then it's kind of like that opportunity, no, 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 Kristen, don't opt out of taking that class. You should actually think about taking that class if that's what you want to do, so, anyway, sorry, Brad.
We actually, um, this is a, I think it's cool, but you might think it's a little long-winded here, but, so, part of that research group, we met, made some connections, and Dr. Allison Masters, she's a, a senior research fellow at University of Houston, and she does a lot of mindset studies. So, looking at small interventions that we can use with students to help give them a more growth mindset. So, we worked at the middle school with her because of this seventh grade phenomenon, and she did a very simple intervention research study. So, she showed, she had two different videos and then a, like a, a control group. So, kids who got no videos, kids who saw one video, kids who saw two videos. And the videos are like three minutes on YouTube, I can share them with you if you want to see them. But they're super short, but they show girls and girls of color talking about how much they love STEM classes. And then when kids registered, so they did this before registration, and then when students registered, we looked at the data to see if that made a difference. And what we saw is, students who were exposed to those short little videos, which you'd think like, that's not going to make a difference to a kid, right? I was like, I was very skeptical of it. Those students were three times more likely to sign up for an advanced math, science, or computer science class. That's pretty amazing. A three-minute video can make a big difference in what a kid's perception of themselves is in terms of their course selection, so, some good research coming out. Post-secondary, our kids have amazing access to dual credit classes, to AP classes. This is something that I, I think we should probably tell our story a little bit better about. You know, not to beg on Geneva, but I think they added two, two dual credit courses, and we have over twenty options for students. So, our kids have these options, and to me, the next frontier for this is not adding more classes, we can do that too, uh, to give more options, but making sure we're pushing more kids into those dual credits, because if a student has a jump start with those college credits, who knows where they can go, right? Kids who didn't think they could do college, now are like, I already have twelve credits, why, why wouldn't I finish my associates? So, I think this is a, a huge benefit for Potavia.
I mean, I'll just share my personal story, so, my daughter graduated last year, she just finished her freshman year and did very well, and she's, um, she made the honor roll, and she's listed as a junior now, even though she's only been in school for one year, because her college accepted almost all of the dual credits, so.
Mine was the same, but he won't manage to graduate early, so.
That's still to be determined.
I'm not saving any money.
I bribe my child, so if you graduate early, I'll give you that cash, you can go on a trip, and I don't think it's going to work.
Didn't think of that.
Yeah, it, it, so to, to, just, one statistic that I think is really important to highlight Brad's point is, the cla, graduating class of twenty-four, uh, at Potavia High School, almost half of that class took either a dual credit or AP credit class. Almost half of that graduating class did. Whereas, when I look at certain North Shore high schools that I'm very familiar with in the North Shore, or even in our region, that is, can be as low as eight percent to like high twenties. So, for me, it's, it, it's, it is something that I think we do tremendously well. Just so you're aware, the Pathways to Prosperity Aurora Regional Group has asked and had people come visit with Mr. Gamlin and with Brad to ask them, what is the model we're doing, what are we doing strategically to get kids to take these classes? People are asking us about that, because, um, our numbers are pretty.
They're staggering.
Unusual.
Yeah, we have a great partner in Mubanti.
That is another factor.
I mean, the other part for me, uh, again, I'm just sharing my personal stories, that, you know, I would ask her a lot about how is it going? And not even with the credits that she came to, but it's just she was prepared for the rigor. I mean, it was still challenging, don't get me wrong, but it wasn't like this overwhelming thing, like she had to develop some of the study skills to keep, you know, keep up with the coursework in high school. So, it, it seems like, uh, the kids that are taking advantage of it are going to be more prepared to have early success in that transition.
So, that's, that, uh, that slide was post-secondary college enrollment. What about, like, some of the other programs, like, I don't know the right word, but like, if they're going into the trades or something like that, you know, going to be a, learn to be a mechanic or something like that, can they take some classes in high school and get credit for that when they go to those particular schools?
Yeah, that's called articulated credit, so, students can, uh, take those courses in high school, and then they used to have to pay like a very small amount to get those on their transcript for college when they went, but now it's free in the state of Illinois. They've made some changes to that. But now it's free in the state of Illinois, they've made some changes to that. So those kids can apply, say, hey, I took these courses in, in high school and then they get that. It's not like a dual credit where they get both at the same time, but they can apply and get those credits. A different form of dual credit called articulated.
And we offer that?
Yeah, we offer that through our Fox Valley Career Center and through our own manufacturing program as well, through Labonce.
Just have a quick question, so that, the graph on the left, it goes to twenty twenty-two, do we not have twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four's data?
It, it's all in our reers right now. They changed some of our reporting on this, so it's very late in being published. Just going on to the, this is the end of priority number one, just kind of what does this tell me and my team? People can make their own interpretations, but this is kind of what it tells me and then I wanted to share with the board some of the work that we're doing. So we see math growth and proficiency is trending in the right direction, that's super important. We're not just resting, we're doing that EM squared implementation at the middle school. And then as an access issue, adding that seventh and eighth combined. So what we currently do in fourth and fifth grade, we're going to do at seventh and eighth grade to give multiple opportunities for students who are ready for that challenge and acceleration in math. Our reading growth and proficiency is stagnant and we talked last night about the work that that team is doing. We're seeing some minimal growth in closing achievement gaps, not enough for me. We will continue to evaluate access issues, provide supports through our multi-tiered system of support to make sure students are getting what they need so we can close those achievement gaps. And then looking at a celebration is that post-secondary, so our dual credit numbers are great. This year we had our first ISB pathway approved, so the state has required each school district to have, is it two or three? Can't remember, I think it's three.
I think it's three.
Three pathways in your high school, so it's like a concentration into one of eight career fields. So our first one is in education, so you have to go through an application process. And the requirements of that are you have a number of courses for students that you have work-based learning opportunities for students in that particular field. And then you also have work-based like experiences, like they set up mock interviews and those types of things have to be a part of your application. So we have our first approved and we're going to start this year working on our second one. So our kids who are, who just graduated in May, some of them have earned on their transcript a pathway certificate in education, which I think is really cool. Inclusion and belonging, so again, there's a number of different metrics that the, the plan identifies and I'll take you through a few of those. Again, you might want to look at this on your screen. So there are two parts to the panorama survey that we do with students and it's, I'll try and make sure each of these is labeled correctly. But there's a skills part, so what are the skills that students need to be really successful? And then the belonging part, so this particular chart shows you those skills in emotional regulation, social awareness, grit and self-management. So you can see self-management is our lowest area and this is reported by teachers. So of our elementary students. So this is our teachers, when they observe our students, they also take the survey. And this is what they're identifying as what students need is self-management work. The students are still scoring really high, but it's good for us to know like what kind of lessons can we help give our elementary students that will help booster those self-management skills. Here's the same type of information. But it's, um, there's one added called supportive relationships and you can see that that's in the nineties. So in the survey for grades three through five kids, they tell us that they have ninety, ninety-seven percent of our students in all categories say they have supportive relationships, that's supportive relationships, family and community, peers and with their teacher. So all three groups. So to me, that's a huge celebration is that students feel like they have those supportive relationships and they're telling us that.
Is that broken out, but like they're telling us?
We can look at it by question, yeah.
Okay.
And like we saw in the, the, um, the building presentations, peer-to-piers are lowest area within that. So they feel really good about their teachers, they feel really good about family and community, less so about, but still very high.
So just a quick question, um, why do you, so two things really, so on the teacher one, there's grit. And on the student one is that would be the same as perseverance?
Yeah, there's two different questions, that's the teachers get one, but they're relatively the same thing.
Why, why do you think there's like a difference between the teacher and the student? Is the student think more, and I'm just like, I don't know, do they think they're more, I think I can do this, where the teacher's kind of like, I don't know if that student can do it.
Right, like self-management, look how high kids are scoring themselves?
Right.
Look what the teachers say.
Right.
So we have, we're investigating that, this is our first year with this data, that's a really interesting phenomenon is that difference between what teachers are saying and what students are saying about themselves.
I don't know, I see that at home with my kids occasionally, it's like, you're not doing as good as you think you are, you know? Those colored glasses a bit.
And some of these things could be like just a misperception, right? So a student could be very well self-managed. But their behaviors might show a teacher and the teacher might pick up on that and label that as a lack of self-management. So these can be like inward be, inward thoughts and then outward behaviors can be a part of that as well. We see a very similar picture here at the six through eleven, again, supportive relationships, huge strength, peers, peers, family, community and teacher. And we don't do a teacher survey at the upper levels. So here you can see some information around belonging. Again, the, the buildings really talked a little bit about this, so I won't spend too much time on this. But really we're starting in a really good spot, you can see that seventy percent there of our students are, are answering that favorably. That puts us in the ninetieth percentile nationally. So the national comparison gives us kind of a benchmark of where we're at with this. So we have seventy percent of our students scoring that, um, that positive range. They're telling us that and that puts us in the ninetieth percentile. Below, we have sixty-six of our six through eleven, that puts us in the eightieth percentile, so a really solid base.
Is this the first year that the kids were at the grade school levels, were doing the questions, right?
Yep.
So they're also figuring this test out because it's the first time they've ever had it, I suppose, too. So it'll be interesting to see how that trends.
Mm-hmm. Here we have it broken down by race, you can do, you do see some gaps here in terms of our belongingness data. So white students, black students, two or more races, and then we have really small groups that we don't report out. So three to five, we're seeing some of those gaps.
Brad, before you move on to that, I know this was our first year using Panorama, how do you feel it was as a tool? Was it embraced by the staff and you think it's giving us?
More than I ever thought. Cause sometimes data and getting information about how our kids are feeling about their experience can be pretty scary, right? You're like, I don't know what they're going to say or. I think our staff has really embraced that, they've seen positives, but they've also, cause I sit on a couple of school leadership teams. I sit on JB Nelson's and Grace McWayne's. And I can tell you that they had really, really robust, honest conversations in looking at that data. It's something that they really dug into. So they were like, alright, we're doing okay as a school, but let's look deeper and they looked deeper at some of these types of numbers. And they were like, alright, what can we do? And that, you heard Jeff Modaf talk about and Nicole Prentice, both, both teams did this. They're like, we got to find out more, so they talked to the kids, so they did those focus groups.
That's what I was going to say, I remember from the, the building presentations that it seemed like they got it. It was like, sometimes they were a little surprised and they were taking different actions to try to, uh, address some things, which is I think what we're, we want for this, right?
Right, that's, that's money right there.
And even at the DCC level, you know, our, our colleagues at the table, hearing some of the teacher leaders that are a part of DCC express their surprise even at the secondary level about what the students were reporting through this new tool. It was interesting to hear them processing through that, that, and the, um, some of the middle school representatives shared that they were really glad that we've moved over to let students share their voice as well. Cause they acknowledged that there was a disconnect in seeing results between what teachers' perception were versus what the students were reporting.
Cause that's the thing that I think about, I mean, a hundred years ago when I was in grade school, but I never really remember any adult in the building ever asking me like, I mean, they cared about you, but it wasn't like diving into it like this. So it seemed like this sort of, um, had a, this reporting sort of then at least some of the buildings said, we need to go out and have more conversations with the kids and, and investigate further, so I think that's a real big positive actually.
Yeah, I think that Joanne talked about street data, they're using that, that book. It's really important, right? Cause we can get this high level, you know, this is a survey we give a couple of times a year. It does tell us stuff, but unless you hear it from the kids, it's harder to make like appropriate changes to your school, your school climate, the school environment that will really benefit the kids.
Well, I, and you're not going to have it on here and I, maybe off the top of your head, but was there for the grades three through five, were they all pretty similar, like for our elementary schools? Like nothing like, one school didn't score like this and like that?
No, they were, they're all fairly stable from fall to, and then they took a little dip.
Right, I remember they all took a dip in like that winter, or was it this?
I think they felt pretty good about winter, it was the spring where they were like, hey, what happened here in the spring?
What's your thoughts, Brad, on why, why is Asian and American Indian showing up on the grade six through eleven and not on three through five?
We have more students to report. So Panorama will not report out in the district level reports if we have under ten students in that particular category. That's a setting that we have to protect anonymity. One of the things with Panorama, I love talking about it, I think our staff is using it. I want kids to believe in this too, right? I want them to tell us the truth. And I think like, that's really important to me, so like I try not to reveal too much where kids would be like, hey, they're talking about me, right? I don't want that, I don't want them to start distrusting this. I want them to feel that we're not going to reveal anything about what they're saying to us.
And the state does the same thing, just FYI, uh, when we have to submit to the data dashboard at the end of each year, Rob, if there's a, uh, if it's under a certain number on our state like district report card, they will not report the results of what was entered. If, if the number is too small.
Right, and that, and that makes sense. What about Hispanic or Latino, where does that fit in here?
I don't, that should be on there for both areas, I don't know why it's not, I'll have to take a look at that. That's one of our bigger subgroups. So with the Panorama survey, this is our first year, one of the biggest complaints I get about Panorama is that more teachers want access to the system so that they can look at the data. That's my biggest complaint, which I think is a great complaint, right? Our problem is we want to make sure teachers have the training in order to use that system. So we are, um, we're going to possibly expand the use of this tool to both families, in the VPS families as well as our staff. And the reason we're taking a look at that is because we think that we can start to triangulate and get a clearer picture on what's going on related to those skills and that sense of belonging by talking and hearing from parents and our staff as well. So that's something that we're going to explore this year and possibly launch, uh, is to add on those two additional surveys, one for families and then one for our staff related to them. And that could help us triangulate that data a little bit better. Five Essentials has not been updated, so I won't spend a lot of time there. We, so belonging is like the gold standard for us, we want all kids to feel like they're belonging. But we also look at other data, the board should know that we look at other data that is related to that and either confirms it or brings up further questions. One of those pieces of data is looking at discipline data, particularly exclusionary discipline. So that would be on the, the far right hand, which is where I'll kind of focus my comments. When a discipline incident is serious enough to warrant a kid being put out of school, whether it's for an in-school or out-of-school suspension, that's a big deal, right? Cause we are denying them their education during that time. So the state has put in a lot of requirements for, um, that process, but it's also something that we take a look at as well. So focusing on that upper right quadrant, you can see that there were a total of three hundred and nine incidents that led to a suspension. And then just how to read this is a hundred and sixty-seven of those students were white. It's about fifty-four percent of the total incidents, which white students represent seventy-four percent of the student body. So there's not a discrepancy there, right? They're underrepresented in terms of suspensions. Go one column to the right of the three hundred and nine incidents, thirty-two of those students were black. They represent ten percent of the total incidents, but as in terms of the student body, they are just four percent of our student body. So there's a discrepancy there, they're overrepresented. So we represent that by saying it's two-point-five times discrepant. So that is a number that we carefully watch because we don't need those discrepancies. The numbers highlighted in green because it was actually much higher the previous year, it was six-point-two percent. Six-point-two times discrepant in the previous year. So we did see a massive decrease in that particular number. It's because we're looking at that, talking about it, looking at what alternatives we can have instead of putting a student out of school. Cause that's a pretty severe form of punishment. And you can see the rest of the grades there too. So we're making some progress in some areas, but this will be an area that we take a look at. This was, uh, we had our administrative retreat in, uh, in June, early June. And this was something that we talked about it as an administrative team is, is doing this. In fact, one of the things that we talked about doing was making sure before we put a student out for suspension, that we're not doing that in isolation, we're conferring with another administrator to talk through whether that's the right thing to do. Sometimes it is the right thing to do, we have an obligation to maintain, um, safe schools. But if we're not doing that in a way that is, is fair to student, that is causing discrepancies, then we need to check ourselves. So that is something that we're talking about as an administrative team, just as kind of a, we do look at this and we do take action based on it.
This is state-reported too, right?
We got, we have to report all this to the state.
And if you hit a certain trend or a certain amount and they come back and slap you on the wrist until you need to fix something, though?
Yeah, it's more than a slap on the wrist though.
Okay.
It's pretty serious, yeah. So if you have these big, long-lasting discrepancies in, uh, discipline rates, there's more punitive measures. They can tell you how to spend your money, they can tell you, they can put you on an improvement plan, it's a lot of monitoring.
I had a conversation at, with, uh, one of my sessions with board presidents at triple I. And one of them, two or three of them were lamenting and they were pretty far down south. They have high numbers of this because they can't quite figure out how to reconcile a particular discipline abuse type issue and being able to actually get corrective behavior. And so they were like leaning hard on suspensions to try to solve the problem and the state was basically telling them, you can't do what you're doing, you know? So.
And this has changed a lot, I mean, when I was a high school administrator, I suspended a lot of kids and that wasn't even my primary job. I was a curriculum guy, but like this used to be a much more prevalent practice. And then we started to see all sorts of research about how detrimental this is. It's detrimental not only to that student missing their education, but then they're like, I don't belong at that school, right? That really impacts that student's, um, emotional health by putting them out of school. And it really doesn't stop those behaviors.
So my question is, so we're, I talked about how we looked at it and we're keeping, I don't know if we're keeping a closer eye on it, but like are there different procedures or protocols that we're now adhering to or we're looking at this more often? Or we're doing more training with our staff so that they're more cognizant of maybe biases or? I mean, I'm just trying to figure out like, is this something we think was going to be consistent that we can keep trending this down hopefully?
We do look at our procedures, we do look at our, our policies, our board policies around discipline. To me, the biggest impact is mindset, right? And it's the mindset of all the adults within our system. When we went to school, school probably had a very punitive mindset, right? You punish and that's going to correct the behavior. When we went to school, school probably had a very punitive mindset, right, you punish and that's gonna correct the behavior. In some cases that worked, what we're now after is shifting that mindset from punitive to restorative. So restorative is really saying, alright, a student made a mistake, it can be a really bad mistake too, but I need to repair that relationship. Not only do I need to have the adult and the student repair that relationship, but I need to have the student and the other student that they may be hurt. Emotionally, physically restore that relationship too, because when you break those relationships. That's when students start to disengage from school, they start to have repeat recidivism of those those common behaviors. You see increases in drug and alcohol use, uh there's numbing some of those behaviors as well, so we wanna take a restorative mindset. Which means we look for opportunities to restore relationships with students, they they have done something wrong according to our policies. That doesn't make them a bad kid.
So do we have restorative practices, like if both parties are aligned to it?
Yeah, so that's something that we're gonna really work on in the next couple of years, where we got some groundwork done, we're doing some work at our middle school. We had a little grant to do that and then that got taken away, but um we're gonna really focus on restorative practices. If you think about it, we're very trained and punitive, like that's our mindset, it's like you do something wrong, there's a consequence. But we don't go that next step, alright, there might be a consequence, but how do I amend that relationship? So giving our staff and our students those tools to have a more restorative mindset is really important, Tom?
And I was just gonna add, a part of what has been going on for the last two years, which um. Is what we would attribute uh for some of the successes and where we're seeing us able to mitigate those numbers. Has been through our tier one level of approach in social emotional learning, our castle framework that you've heard about. Um you know, and that is research-based uh skill, research-based skills. Uh in terms of how we're asking teachers to look at their classroom learning environment. And what we can do to continually create a more positive learning environment, in fact, I think Raquel, at the May board meeting. You had talked a little bit about, so these visits are surprise, are not surprise visits, you might, you know, and you were talking about your job, right, like. I would do surprise visits for the look force, right, and I, so, but that conversation in May. Is a reflection of the work that we've been doing and working to s- um expand across the district. So that the c- there's a common vernacular and vocabulary being used from bottom to top and top to bottom in our district. So a student who comes into our district knows like what castle is, it's gonna look a little bit different and feel a little bit different depending on what. What age the student is, right, like what you're doing at the elementary level schools isn't gonna be the same as what you might be doing at BHS, right? But this is um, this is one of the heaviest. Research-based practices and approach schools can do to be proactive in trying to attack that, so.
Do we have a sense of how like representation impacts all of this? Cause I mean, I think we have like what ninety percent white staff, right?
I don't know the current numbers that we're seeing here to know that, or I don't know those current numbers, yeah. But yeah, representation does matter. The other thing I like to point out this slide is, we have really good kids, right, I do, we talk about discipline and discipline incidents are are hot. I remember my kids, they would come home and I'd ask them how school was, and they'd tell me who got marked down on the. The behavior chart, right, like it's just something we naturally gravitate towards, but our kids are really good, a hundred, this represents a hundred and seventy-three students. That's three point four percent of our students, so ninety-seven percent of our students are doing great. So we have really good kids here in Batavia, but this is something that we will monitor and get better at.
I have a question. So this is reported to the state, does only the suspensions get reported to the state, or does the overall discipline incidents get reported to the state?
Not all incidents, cause that overall incidence could be like excessive tardies, it could be something really minor like excessive tardies, or it could be. I stole from the lunch line, or it could be I got in a fight, so there's a huge range of those total discipline incidents. The state only looks at certain categories of discipline, and they look at suspension, so they'll look at fighting. Drugs, alcohol, tobacco, assault, staff assault, they they tell us the categories that they want. Us to report on, but they also look at exclusionary discipline.
Has staff ever had implicit bias training to try to see how their own preconceived notions affect. Decisions they make about students?
Yeah, we've done some stuff as a district a couple of years ago, and then some buildings have done some more follow-up on that, but that's definitely a factor. Bullying data, again, you can see this is a very small number of students, we've talked a lot about bullying at the board level. There was a new data collection which actually served to help our discussions and that. Came through the state of Illinois through the Racism Free Schools Act, which uh requires us to track bullying in a different way. So it standardized some bullying practices throughout the state, and then also gave us a new reporting mechanism. To get more granular with the data that we're reporting to the state related to bullying. So we had nine incidents of bullying um this school year. Uh three went through the process of looking at that, but it was not found to be bullying, so something. There's a strict definition of what bullying is and is not, so they went through the process and three incidents were found unfounded. That doesn't mean nothing happened, it means it was another form of um could've been harassment or something else. But uh nine incidents were reported in our district, they went through this process. Um seven of those related to a protected class, so this could be about a student's sexual orientation. Gender identity or race, or there's about six or seven other areas that we report on, but those would be the big ones.
Do you know if these were reported um to staff or if they went to the hotline number or?
That is not data that I collect, but that would be interesting.
So two thousand four hundred and thirty-three discipline incidents, but only. Nine were considered bullying?
Remember, total discipline incidents is that wide range of things from fighting and assault to. Uh coming late to school everything, or skipping a class, those types of things. So a lot, a lot of discipline incidents, and then these are the ones that met the definition through the process of board.
What are the, are there specific criteria that have to be met, cause I looked at like the def- definition on the ISBE. And it still seems pretty open to interpretation, like about how the student feels. So that can be very different for, from student to student. So are there specific criteria that have to be met or?
There are specific criteria, but there's, there's always that room in there, right, cause we have to find that that bullying is severe and pervasive, right? So those words, there's some flex in those words, so through the investigation process. They look at those to see whether they meet that definition, it also has to be something that's targeted. Whether it's race, gender identity, one of those pieces, or it could be a student's physical appearance. There has to be that aspect of it as well, so they're looking for all of those pieces through that bullying investigation.
So like just out of like um, if there's an incident between students where. You know, maybe the student calls another student a name, that's not necessarily bullying, that's just gonna be a discipline incident.
That would be one of those two thousand some discipline incidents.
You said harassment and bullying are two different things.
Are we acknowledging yet that bullying has to do with power imbalances, or is that not part of the criteria?
It is, I think that's something that always is a factor within those bullying incidents, so. Um I do, I do a few of these, um because sometimes. There's distrust at the building level because they've had a bad experience at the building level, so I'll step in. And do some of these, in all of the ones that I've investigated and gone through that process. That is a factor in all of them that I've ever done in my career is those power imbalances. I am always shocked at the the social pressures and the social impact that these have on students. And and their families as well, sometimes a lot of the issues are resting with families and how. Their feeling about it, so whether they're reported or not, or um there's problem with the parents. That lead into the kids, those things are always very surprising to me, those are just the few incidents that I've I've looked at this year.
It just seems really low, just based on, you know, when we hear from students coming to, I like I can think of more than seven incidents. That I know about actively right now that are maybe not being reported, um so that's just, yeah.
I, I think, and that's fair, you know, I met with a student at the high school this year, and this student shared with me certain things that they had experienced. And they acknowledged ninety-five percent of their high school, it was a senior, this person's a senior. And acknowledged ninety-five percent of their experience in this entire time they've been a student in our district has been super positive, good stuff. But acknowledged certain things that were happening peer-to-peer that are not good, they're not great. Students had never reported it, never felt that it was a, it was, it was never. What the student shared with me was, it was never one stu- other student always coming at that same, at at this, you know. Person I was speaking with, and never felt like they were the target of a constant attack of either harassment, intimidation, or bullying. But does hear certain things that if a student were to take a second just reflect like, yeah, what you just said in the hallway. Maybe passing by or maybe at in that one conversation you had and you used some of that language, it's probably not great if you, if you're just looking at a student, you know, that's not. That that probably wasn't appropriate, right, um but the student never reports it, right, and so I think there is that. Conundrum that we're, we, that's part of the reason why, um and we'll actually get into the next uh two slides. Oh, okay, uh and I think that's a part of what generated the conversation we've had this year. Uh with the board prior to this iteration of our board and then kind of transitioning now into this board, right? So this year, um we had created two documents. Um one is a flow chart trying to illustrate with a quick visual like look at. To help clarify what some of the steps and processes look look like when bullying um an incident is being reported, right? And that's pertinent to the board policy, and then how how does that then set off our procedures, um and that is currently posted. At a uh later board meeting this past year, or this in this final current school year here month, we then also created a document. That uh I have linked for you, that shows a draft of how we tried to drill down to help clarify. What does that process actually look like, right, cause one is an infographic, right, just to give you a quick snapshot, and then it has a reporting mechanism on it. The other document is to try and help people understand deeper if they wanted to look at it, you know, parents sometimes are curious, well, what what exactly does happen then, right? So we illustrated what those steps might look like, and then are trying to share and convey, like we have questions, we have forms. Our administration is required to file and or complete and file. Um and we got feedback from uh principal advisory committee and from our Bat- Batavia inner school council. Um that's our parent group, and in that feedback. A overwhelming amount of the feedback we got from students and from that parent group was very positive, they felt that this was helpful, they felt like. Two documents, you know, some said this document is really clear, it helps me understand things, or some said pairing the two was really nice. Because one provided a little bit more in-depth drill down uh on some of that information. The one piece of feedback that we did give back that was constructive was uh. Students don't quite understand what ISB stands for or means. Um so there is some language and lingo here that isn't necessarily student-friendly, like such as ISB, or when we talk about board policy such and such, you know, right? They're, that was some of the feedback there, I don't, we haven't figured out how to mitigate that component of it yet. Uh but the second piece was this, especially the parents, can you work on ways to put this in the hands of parents? At any time you have like forward-facing meetings, you know, when we have like um. Uh right, is it freshman night, ninth grade night, you know, at the high school and we invite parents to the auditorium, then they go see programming. Could that be an opportunity where we're also kind of sharing this information, pushing that far, and I thought that was a really good point, cause we, I don't think we really do that right now. Um we have put in some of our weekly update messengers, you know, from time to time, we've put that information out there. Uh we have signage in our buildings, but I thought that was a really good suggestion, when we're holding a captive audience for an event. You know, that might be a good our opportunity for us to share more of this information, so that's one of the things that um we got back late this semester as feedback. And um you know, we're, I've already shared that with our team, and we're talking about what were some more proactive ways we can get information out to people, including the um. QR code to help report things.
So one comment I have is, um I kind of agree when you look at this and then the low number of bullying incidents, it does seem like. That doesn't seem possible, that could be that low, even if you're doing a great job with as many students as you have. So one thing I might be interested in, just cause I think what we're trying to do is get uh. Create a culture where students are treating each other with respect and dignity and all that type of thing, I would sort of be interested the next time the data is presented. To maybe have a little more of a breakdown of some of the other classifications of the incidents, I know a lot of them are like tardies and things like that, but. Just to kind of get, cause this is hard for me to judge if like we're getting better or not, cause it's such a small number that, I mean, I'm sure there's, we can agree that. Even when I think we were looking at panorama, like the peer-to-peer interactions is one of the lower rated scores for some of them, I would just be sort of interested in some of these. Other categories that are uh related, maybe, you know, just to how the kids are treating each other and if they feel. You know, respected by their peers, I mean harassment might be one of them, I don't, I wouldn't pretend to understand which ones we should look at, you guys would have a better grasp of that, but.
Well, I think that's part of what we noted, uh peer-to-peer relationships is the, is one of the areas that scores the lowest. And that's, that's what we know and we have to continue to work on and focus. As a board though, if I could, just ask you the question though then, as a board, at at a governance level, the data you wanna monitor. To understand whether or not we're moving the needle in the right direction under priority two. Is it, in my opinion, what we uh have been talking about with the general sense of belonging, right? Cause one of the legs on the stool is about peer-to-peer relationships, right? And that's really important, that I think that's really critical, um but as we're working on these things. As some buildings might be improving in one area and other buildings are still lagging in another, we have to allow those buildings. Flexibility to start addressing those at their school leadership team level with their principal, and figure out some proactive strategies to. How to approach that, right, cause if one building um on peer-to-peer relationships has found a way to uh. You know, really move their rep- reporting in a very positive direction, and another one is lagging, you know, I think someone at one of our board meetings asked. You know, do the principals share and dialogue, and the answer is yes, you know, and that's a part of what, why, why we collaborate and have monthly meetings uh with principals. So they have time to share, but they they obviously talk to each other um all the time as well, without having to have a formal meeting here at the office, right, at the district office. So I think it's, you're raising a really good point, but again, I think that that is where um staff and administration data. Is what we are looking at, and so that the board's level with the power goals is not replacing. Our monitoring of this data, I mean, we're still required to report this um information to the state of Illinois. We're still using it to inform our practices and our strategies, you know, the tactics we're using to try and address these situations. So, yeah.
That's a good question, um so I know at the middle school, right, we put QR, did we put the QR code on the IDs? And I did, do we do it at the high school, or I don't remember, I really don't remember.
Is it everywhere or?
I think we put them on all IDs, didn't we?
Is it on the electronic ID? I don't know.
And then, so the other.
We did it, cause we talked about it, I remember.
I know we did the middle school, I don't remember the high school. I, I don't remember, um but I know we did the middle school, because I I saw it, and I was like, nice. Cause we also put the suicide hotline and I thought that was cool. Um and I know, so it's June now, and I'm just asking, I don't know, but the bullying flow chart, right? I know we just did the budget, um but do you think this would be a useful thing to make like a bookmark? Like an actual printed bookmark, so for like the parents or kids that go to registration, like they have to physically go to registration. And just like a, like a, I don't know, I don't think they get packets anymore when they go to like elementary school, but I really don't know, or middle school, I don't know.
We can look at it, no, we don't do a lot of packets.
Right, but just like, you know, that's something that they can just, again, I know we're getting, we're trying to get away from printing stuff, but. I, I still keep stuff up on my fridge.
Well, and I think, you know, Raquel, you're, you're raising a really good question because I think that is act. I think that's in spirit with some of the feedback we got from the parents in that, how can we create more opportunities for, uh. Forward-facing, push-in type of information delivery. So I, you know, I, I think that's a, one of those ideas that we can tack on to something we can discuss, um, as an administration. I quite frankly thought that was a great suggestion when, when the one parent said, you know, have you thought about like the big parent come-to nights? That's just one of the things you guys have, you're giving out and informing and I was like, yeah.
One of the things I like about that idea is a lot of the process that happens with this is kind of like. From a perception, it goes into a black hole when the event happens, right? And so because of student privacy, student safety and everything else, nobody can report out that anybody was ever punished or whatever else, so people just think. It disappears into the ether, which does not necessarily encourage anyone to actually report it. So maybe if, you know, these, this information wasn't out there that people understood there was a process, maybe they feel like, okay, at least. There's something I can kind of recognize and hold, so I'm, I love that idea that, that parent mentioned about bringing that out there because my hope is, and we've talked about this is. Yes, this is low bullying numbers and actually there's kind of a bit of an expectation that that number might rise. As people and kids are feeling more comfortable reporting it and we'll get a more honest number over time. Because what I've heard from people, which kind of alluded to what you were talking about, what you alluded to is, you kind of like. Know there's more people out there, but this isn't aligning to your, at a minimum right now perception, which I think is equal in reality in this case. So I think that's what I kind of like about what I, that idea of pushing that out there because. Then people understand there's a process that they might not have known.
Yeah, it takes a long time to create a, an environment of trust for people to report to us and go through that.
I have a question, if, if it is determined to be bullying. Is part of the process that the parents are. They let the parents know that yes, this did qualify as bullying and it's been reported?
Uh, I believe the window of time is actually twenty-four hours, Brad, is that correct?
Parents have to know that we're going into an investigation within twenty-four hours and within ten days, we're required to conclude the investigation. And let them know, yeah.
Okay, so if it is bullying, you would let the parents know, do you let them know if it is determined not to be bullying?
And if it's not bullying, it doesn't mean we don't do anything.
And that's the hard part to explain to parents, we're like, this isn't bullying, but this is not acceptable behavior in our schools, so here's what we're gonna do with that. So another, like, in terms of like, we're looking for that sense of belonging, we use discipline data as like a check on that. We also look at absenteeism, so you can see here chronic absenteeism, which is missing ten percent or more. Of the school day, so it's about eighteen days that a student would miss. So you can see twenty-two, twenty-three coming off of the pandemic at high chronic absenteeism. And that has, uh, clicked down a little bit the past two years. Uh, Holly and her team have done a great job of promoting more of an awareness of attendance issues through our district messengers. And the buildings have done that as well, so I, I really appreciate that. You know, you can see in all areas, we're seeing smaller, uh, there are some groups that I would like to see even smaller, so our, our EL students. We're still worried about their attendance and looking at that, that's one of our highest areas right now, so. How do we communicate with parents about the value of school, about when to keep your kid home? I think Kristen Stevens from AGS talked about their nurse doing some teaching of parents. As to when it's appropriate to stay home from school and when it's not. Breaking, breaking that down a little bit further into demographics, you can see, again, it's headed in the right direction, but there are things that we need to take care of. And then the high school talked about this data, we're seeing activity participation. Is kind of another way of keeping kids engaged, feeling that sense of belonging. You can see those three-year trends are, are positive. Low-income students again is another area that I'm impressed by, ten percent or, yeah, ten percent increase in that over three years, so. Some positive things, so lots of opportunities for our, our, our kids, but making sure that they have access to those.
There's a lot going on with that, as I understand that, on outside partners, like getting kids that might not be able to, like. Have a parent that drives them to an event or a thing, then there's activity buses that are working through some.
Yeah, the activity buses, that Mark is, Mark and Josh, they have gotten, going at the middle school and high school, I think have been great. BAFT, um, that organization has been great about giving kids opportunities that they may not have had before.
Our newer partner with Boys, partnership with Boys and Girls Club. Has been huge. And the reason why, part, because they, along with BAF, buffs, stations, some of these other groups. The reason why I really appreciate their partnership and support in the district mothers' club too, is the financial resources they're putting behind it. To, to students, right, who might have financial barriers to be able to participate. And I think that's just such a significant thing, cause sometimes some partners have the ability to subsidize some scholarships. But not for everybody who wants to participate and the groups that we're mentioning right now. Will pretty much try and do it for every kid or family that says we can't afford it to it. That's, I think, a significant difference.
When did we start the activity buses? Is that a year ago, two years ago?
Two years ago at the middle school.
And that's like two buses in the evening, right? Is that, am I right about that?
Yeah, so at the, um, middle school, it's the east side and west side, um, and at the high school, it's basically, it's. One bus, but two different times.
Two times, yeah.
So it kind of gets the earlier practices and then it gets the later ones.
So just to kind of conclude with the priority two. Is we have a good base of those social, emotional behavior skills and a sense of belonging. But we need to dig deeper into that, um, belonging, that was one of our, again, at our administrative retreat. Looking at that, what does that really mean? How do we dig deeper into that? How do we get to true belonging? And then I talked a little bit about before, that staff and parent survey to triangulate that data, to see what they're saying. And then, um, we're seeing, you know, that high level of, of, uh, sense of belonging. But confirming it with discipline attendance, we're making some incremental gains there too, so we need to continue. Building our systems, examining those systems, making sure we're not putting up barriers, looking at our processes and then PD to target those gaps. So our overall assessment is we're doing well for some, but we need to continue to work on all.
So for the staff and parent survey, uh, would that be asking staff, do you feel a sense of belonging, like those same questions?
That's, that's the opportunity, so, um, Natalie Ossel, who's the director of student services, is gonna oversee that implementation, so she's gonna work with. They have like, I'm gonna say dozens of surveys for, for staff and dozens for parents. So she's gonna use our, um, student services group and the equity team to select what surveys, what information. Are we gonna want? Uh, out of their bank of surveys, so she's gonna use those two teams to select that and work through those two teams. But I'm kind of excited to see what they pick and what, what other piece of the, the puzzle that tells us.
So what would be falling off the survey train would be the five essentials. Because right now, that's the piece that's used for staff and parents. But they will only give us the results if we hit a certain amount of stu-, of parents and staff to respond. Staff typically are a really high response rate and that's easy because we provide them some time to, to be able to complete, they might think at a staff meeting or something like that, right? At the buildings and they're able to do that when the, the survey portal opens in the spring. But you'll notice as parents, uh, the campaign onslaught that happens on commu- emails. To please, we're begging you, fill this survey out, fill this survey out. But we, you know, so our, our belief is that using this tool probably. On the front face of it, be a little bit friendlier to approach as a tool and, um, you know, it'll coordinate well. And we'll get the results and we'll be able to see the results ourselves rather than relying on, uh, an arm of the agency of the state. And if we don't hit the cutoff number, we don't even get the results.
So the reason I assume they do that is so that you get a statistically valid set pool of responses. Get skewed by overly, overly active parents in their kids' lives.
We're just, we're not just tapping on people's shoulders saying, hey, would you fill that out?
Yeah, right.
Cue all the results.
Five, five, fives.
Everybody in music clubs.
And the nice thing is that staff and the parents are, they'll feed into panorama, which is a platform, so we could see it all together. Which will be really nice for comparison's sake. So our kids are saying this, our teachers are saying this, and this is what the parents saying, are they lining up or are there gaps? And that I think will be very instructive for us. All right, I talk to you guys a lot, I'm really sorry, but.
Time to hand it off to Josh. Seventy-eight minutes. He said fifty-three thousand.
All right, so let's transition to priority three. Um, that's what you're gonna hear pretty much the rest of the night and we're gonna talk specifically about some things that the business office is working on. When we were here in January and we talked about priority three, these were some of the goals that I outlined for you guys, so for those of you who are new. I'll just go through them really quick, we're gonna talk about my school box and payment processing. We're gonna do a recap of how our new food service company did throughout the year. We're gonna look at benefits and the costs and how that affects budgets. And then we're gonna talk about enrollment and residency and making sure that we're servicing, uh, the residents of Batavia Public Schools. So payment processing, so back in December, the board approved a new payment processing tool. Um, and we got a lot of feedback from parents and from staff that we needed to move to a new platform. And make it consolidated for, um, all stakeholders to ease payments and also not have different apps that they were working on. So we're doing a great job on this timeline, it's actually ready to roll out now. Um, and we've been using it at, um, RMS and BHS, um, ever since, uh, really April. And really that is a testament to so many different departments in the district. Uh, technology was a huge part in making sure that this occurred, Holly did a great job communicating it out. And the staffs at BHS and RMS have done a great job implementing this. Been to a lot of coaches meetings about this and they're all very excited to get this up and running. And really, that's what it comes down to, it's moving away from the example of kids coming in with quarters and dollars and permission forms. And it all being electronic, our schools are gonna be able to actually take payment in the office. So if a parent comes in and they wanna pay for something, they can just pay. Um, they don't have to, you know, go back and log in and do anything like that, we can service anyone that comes into the office. Um, and we can also do it online with the, um, portal. And this is what the portal looks like, so, uh, this is fresh off the, um, development floor, it's, it's, it's almost final phase. But when a parent logs into the system, they're gonna see all of their per- pertinent, pertinent information. Um, there, so you've got your meal balances, positive or negative, and you can pay them and you can click in there and you can see. What, um, students ate, you get your invoices, they're all piled in there. There's a little corner there, it'll be a total of them, if you've got a lot pending, um, but it's each individual invoice that you can see and what you're being charged for. And then the store is where parents can go in and purchase, um, items or give permission for field trips and pay for field trips. It's all on one platform, so you don't have to be going to different websites to process payments.
I have a good question.
Of course.
So I know, I like, you have to like pay before you regi-, is that what I used to go, you had to pay and then you could register? So can they, so I guess the question is, is if I, say I don't, I didn't pay, but I go to register, can I pay when I register?
You can, the registration process is separate from payment. So we're registering and we're getting a schedule and we're going to school. That affects the child and we wanna make sure that they know what's going on and they can get their classes. Payment is an adult issue and we'll work with the parents on that. So it used to be that you couldn't get your class schedule. Uh, and then kids found ways to hack around and go through other sites that I'm not gonna say on here, cause Dave will. You know, get frustrated with me, but kids are smart and resilient and they can figure it out. Um, so that, that method didn't work anymore, so, um, the other nice part about this is. Those of you who've had kids in the district for a long time, you used to get like this soy balance and what the heck is that? Cause it was all the old balances rolled into one, that's not gonna happen anymore. Each invoice will stay with the student as long as they're a student in the school district. So if you don't pay for eighth grade football, you're always gonna see that you didn't pay for eighth grade football. And when you get to pay for it, you can pay for it, but it'll be there, it just won't get lumped into something. Also with the food service, it's gonna stay in that realm. So if you've got a negative five dollar and ninety cent balance like that young man there, when he starts, um, the first day of school next time around. He's gonna have a negative five dollar and ninety cent balance unless his father, who gave me permission to put his name up there, pays for that. He's my example student. The system didn't let me give fake students negative meal balances, it didn't want me to do that. But that's what parents will see when they log in.
Oh, and then real quick.
Yeah, of course.
So if there's a parent with multiple students, will their, their students will be laid out or is there a separate?
Yeah, no, it'll look like, so Bodhi's number one student, my BHS student would be my second student. My RMS eighth grade, I took a snapshot, I also have an RMS seventh grade student, just so I could see the different.
I just didn't know if Bodhi had outstanding from RMS.
No, no, no.
Three years later?
No, no.
Well, he didn't pay for eighth grade football yet.
One year left, y'all. So the idea here is to help consolidate for parents. Um, I actually was just on the phone with Kevin Johnson today and we're working with, the kids are doing at Purdue camp. And what was great is he gives the kids credit off of their invoice if they work, um, his camp. And it was seamless, it was so easy to do and then the parents see that, it's supposed to cost X, but my kid did this many hours. So this much is taken off, here's my bill, so it's very organized.
So this probably saved a lot of the man out, I mean.
Yes, the, the reconciliation on the backend, Kelly is ecstatic. This is seamless for her, um, it, it's, it's great, she's loving it, so. So far, so good, it is new and I'm painting it with a nice broad picture, there will be hiccups along the way. I'm very transparent with people about that and we're just gonna, you know, find what we don't know and learn and grow.
What did you, anything you found in this software?
Yes, there was, um, at RMS, we didn't click a silly little button that said you could only purchase one field trip. So a mom and a dad, both well-meaning, both bought the field trip for their kiddo. So we learned and now you can set it up where once the, the, a parent or a guardian or whoever pays for it. It prevents that child from paying for it again. So that was definitely one of those user error, like we're learning, we're growing and, you know.
I wonder why there's a button that can turn that off anyway.
Awesome, any other questions on payment processing?
I'm just jealous you didn't have this one, my kids were installed.
I'm sorry. All right, the next one is, is food service, um, we have three very large, great partners that we use for contracted services. Food service being one of them and this was our first year with organic life, so we wanted to make sure that. They were giving us the product that we were looking for and at the end of the day, I wanted twenty percent increase in participation. It was probably a little too ambitious of a goal, um, but we got close to ten percent increase, so I'm happy with that. Um, and every single site, we saw increased participation, so that was a, a win in my book. Looking ahead to next year, one of the things that we really saw at all three levels and talking with kids and, and getting feedback. From kids and, and that was really our main driver for feedback, was they wanted more and more cultural food. So we started to do some things more at the middle school and the high school, um, trying to have a more diverse menu, also trying to have more themed days. They did like a Cinco de Mayo day, they did, uh, um, tossed wings for, um, March Madness, like just. Like just trying to have more fun in the cafeteria because whatever we can do to have kids want to come to school, that's a win. So, you know, if that's food service, awesome. If that's extracurriculars, great. Whatever it is, we want that win. But one of the things that me and Organic Life are gonna work on this year is actually getting feedback from staff and parents. Kinda like Brad said, having that triangulated approach. Um, kids are great and they're giving us good feedback, but what do parents want to see in the food? What do the staff feel that their kids need to be fueled for their educational process? So, that's one of the things that we're gonna work on next year.
So I'd comment, the quality of the food, uh, the feedback I got was pretty positive on that, you know. I think the one thing was, they have such a short lunch period and the timing of it, right? So, it's, and that may have affected participation, I think. Um, you know, they don't have the time to wait to get this food and then have an adequate time to sit down and eat. Um, so, and I know you, you, we did the program with Lunch Ahead, right? So, that was a, to me, I think that's a positive.
Mm-hmm.
Um, is that something we're looking at or, or are you still seeing that as a barrier to participation? Is the timeliness of?
You know what, when I'm at the high school, there's two waves of kids. There's the kids that come in right away, they're trying to get to the line as fast as they can. And then there's another wave of kids that they've like gained the system and they wait for the lines to kinda, you know, go down and then they show up and get their food. It's very interesting to see that. Um, Lunch Ahead was great for us this year. Um, I'd say on average, they do like seventy meals a day. Which, that's seventy people that aren't in the line, they're still getting food, which is awesome. Um, but that didn't take off like the kids thought it would or I thought it would have. Uh, really, it comes down to people like to see what they're gonna get. So they wanna be able to peruse the line. Oh, that looks good today. I'm gonna get that. Um, but the duration of a lunch period, that's, that's a different story. That's a principal matter.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not talking about changing that. That is what it is.
Yeah. Exactly.
Rabbi, we can work on things like, uh, they were doing some modifications this year at high school, which we're gonna to point and say.
Yes.
Figuring though.
Yeah, that's, tho- those are the kinds of.
Those are the kinds of things that I think they're looking at. Um, there's some physical constraints that I think we want to consider over time. But even how it feels when you walk down the hallway is part of, you know, some of the things that we, we talk about. And some are easier to fix than others, but, you know, we'll keep tinkering with it so that we can maximize participation. We want a lunch program. Uh, a food service program where the more people that participate in it, the higher quality that everybody gets at a lower price. So, we, we, we definitely, we've made ex- very impressive progress in the last year. Josh and his team and, uh, and the folks at Organic Life have done. I, I'm impressed. We'll keep working on it.
Any other questions on the food service? Alright. The business office likes to tackle lots of pieces that always don't fit together. So we're going from food to benefits and healthcare, okay? Um, you know, last night when Tony talked about the budget, benefits is a large portion of the budget. That's roughly fourteen million dollars of the budget. A lot of that is uh medical. Though, we're self-funded, so that means that every bill that we get, we pay as a district. Um, there's no mythical, you know, bank that pays that. We pay it. Um, the last couple of years, the insurance committee has done a lot of work to try to get our spending on the right track. So, coming out of COVID, we had a lot of money in reserves. A lot of people didn't go to the doctor during COVID. They didn't leave their house. Um, then when people started to get back out into the world, they started going for those elective procedures, seeing doctors again. And we saw that we were running deficits. So, we ran two million dollar deficits in consecutive years. Um, and now we're projected to run about five hundred and forty thousand dollars in the red. We're eating up our reserves. Uh, you can do it once or twice, but it's not something that you can do sustained. Um, so the insurance committee has been doing a lot of good work to make sure that we can curtail those costs and make a minimum increase because this is a huge driver in our budget. So, this is actually something that you're gonna see in September. That's when the board actually approves the plan for the next year's um benefits. But these are the things that we're looking to do. We're restructuring our wellness program um to have only one tiered of incentives instead of two. We restructured our RX and repriced it so that we're staying with the same company, but we got better billing and pricing. And then we're making some changes to our Blue Cross plan. We're staying with Blue Cross. But there's gonna be a tier deductible system, which gets us better rates when we go to Delnor and CDH. And then if you go to a very specific, um, you know, hospital, then there sometimes is a greater deductible with that, so.
Would you mind, or Tony, you could do this too, just, and we have a few new board members kinda walking through how the district funds. I was on the insurance committee and it's not like a typical experience if you're in the private sector, I think. So could you walk through why it's such a significant portion of our budget and how we fund it?
Well, and we're self-funded and that's a big difference.
That's what I'm getting at, we're self-funded.
So, with that self-funded piece, we have all the money and we spend it out. So, whatever we take in, whatever the board contributes, whatever the employees contribute, that pool of money pays all the bills. So, if we're having a good year, then our balance goes up, our fund balance goes up. If we have a year that we're spending in the ride, it goes down. So after two years spending in the ride, we're trying to make some changes so that we get back in the black.
To be clear, this isn't, it isn't expensive because we're self-insured. It's expensive because we have quite literally one of the best plans there is. Even when you compare, you know, school district in gen- in general have very generous plans. We have perhaps the most generous of generous plans. And it accordingly is very expensive. And there's a whole host of reasons for that and along history to why we have the plan that we have. Um, but at the same time, we don't want to peel away the generosity of that plan because our employees have come to rely upon it and value it. But it is very expensive and it's going to be increasingly difficult to maintain that level of benefit over time without making adjustments.
I, I just, I'll just speak from being on the committee for two years, that really is a, a committee that does some really great work because it's, impacts everybody in the district just about. And uh, it's a significant benefit, like you said. And uh, but they have to make tough choices. And then the other piece is the communication piece cause it, just in general, it's very hard to understand. And now we're doing a lot of things with like the newsletters and that, that type of thing, so people can live, try to live healthier lifestyles or take advantage of some of these other benefits to minimize, uh, you know, having to go to the doctors for emergency. Like living healthier lifestyles, I guess, for better outcomes. So yeah, I really think that, uh, it's a challenge, but uh, the district is, the group that's on that, Josh, you're a big part of that. I would see Tony that, uh, um, it's important work because they, it really can, like, you know. It's challenging just cause the cost of healthcare is exploding. And so, managing it's always an ongoing struggle, I think.
Indeed it is.
It is. Any other questions on the insurance? And that'll be coming formally to you in September. Okay. Alright, and then the last piece is enrollment and residency. We want to service the kids that are residents of Batavia Public Schools. We wanna make sure that we're giving them the best education we can. So, with that, you're always hearing things about, hey, maybe someone moved, what's going on there? Um, we've done a good job, in my opinion, of creating a system around that. So last year, we had fifty cases of residency. And what you'll see is, there's a large in the staff reporting um, in that old data. And then this year, a big change in that data. A lot less cases. Um, and a lot of it is parent change. The parents telling us, hey, we're moving, hey, something happened. A lot of times, this is elementary schools where they move within the district, they just change their address on Power School. It's like, whoa, you gotta tell us, you have to give us the formal documentation that you moved. Like, we, we need to know that. You can't just change your address on Power School. Um, so we're glad to see that. One of the things that we do at any transition point is we run um some information through a system called CLEAR. And that gives us a, like a rating. How accurate do we think this person really says they live there? And if we get below a certain rating, then we ask questions and, and reach out to the family. So, that has also decreased, which is great. Uh, a lot of this has to do with communication, talking with the buildings, making sure that they know what the process is. One of the things that we started this year was also um keeping a log of leases. So, previously in the district, someone would register, they, they're renting and we would register them and then we would move on. Well, if the lease expires in two years, now we follow up with the family a little bit before the lease is expiring. Hey, your lease that you registered with is expiring, please send us a new copy. You know, so we try to get ahead of it that way. Um, before it becomes, you know, a potential issue. And ninety-nine percent of the time, like, oh, here's a new lease. You know, thanks for checking with us, so. Uh, and then we're just constantly looking for ways to make it as simple to register and to reestablish residency as we can. So, how do we leverage technology that we can possibly do that every year for every student, but not make it laborious on the families? That's what we're kinda weighing in the business office. Any questions on that? Alright. Well, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Dave. There you go.
Alright. So I'm gonna give you uh my basic synopsis, uh, my timeframe this time. Uh, we were showing you kind of last cycle, last year. Uh, I'm starting this statistical thing from January till current. So some of the numbers will look a little different, but that's kind of why. Uh, so I'll explain a little more when I get into that. Um, so up first is our strategic goals. So this is kind of what we were committing to uh when we met last. Um, so very briefly, um, number one, service efficiency. Uh, we wanna maintain that ninety-five percent on-time ticket resolution. That's important because that means my team is getting back to the staff quickly, promptly, and it's getting closed and fixed promptly. We're not letting it sit there. Um, ticket volume reduction. Um, generally, you wanna have less problems. We're trying to get that to decrease. Uh, I've got a little trend here that I'll share when I get to that slide as well, uh, that we're noticing. Um, security compliance, obviously, we want to get everything done with that, uh, to keep everything secure and safe. Uh, we were able to accomplish all of that, uh, recommendations based on our last audit that we did, so that, that was actually checked off. Um, our system uptime, um, that is providing all the services for the district. So we try to keep everything up as much as we possibly can. And maintaining that four nines is actually a very good statistic. Um, it can only go up from there. Um, so that's a really good number. Alright, so this is ticket volume. Uh, what I did for some of you guys that maybe not have seen this from last time, um, this dotted line is last year. Um, so I'm trying to show the comparison here. One caveat to this is, last December is when we started onboarding our new help desk. You guys approved Incident IQ. Um, so in December, we started rolling that through. Um, so you'll see kinda like the crazy line here, um, from last year. What we've noticed is now the trend is kinda starting to average out a little more close to normal. Um, but we are seeing actually more tickets. People are putting more tickets in because they know how to get to it. Um, and they're knowing, you know, what to report on. We're getting a lot better data on that. I'm really anxious to see what we have happen over the summer here, June, July, August is the crazy month, obviously. Um, that's generally the massive spike of everyone coming back. Hey, I need XYZ in my classroom. Um, that's generally why that happens. Uh, this system we're using now, we actually have like an inventory process. So we actually use barcode scanners on our cell phones and we can walk into a classroom and start scanning tags of all of our stuff in the room. Verify it's still good, check it out to try to avoid some issues for the staff when they do come back. So we're basically checking and rechecking every room as we go through. Um, a little more modernized compared to what we used to do. Ninety-five percent on-time close rate, that was the goal, so that's the solid red line. Um, you can see we did very well this year. I'm very proud of that. The team's been knocking that out. Even though we are seeing more tickets, we're closing them quickly. Uh, one statistic I don't have on here is our first response. Uh, I try to maintain that at under an hour. So if Aaron submits a ticket, someone from my team within an hour will get back and have a response like, hey, let me look into it or whatever. So we're, we're doing very well and that's actually helping us get some more back and forth stuff with the users out of the way. Or, hey, quick link, go here, here's a how-to or something like that. Um, that's helping a lot. Uh, we've had some, a couple other things developed because of these numbers. Uh, we started a knowledge base. So we're still able to like link an article back and like how to do something in Gmail or how to, you know, print something. Uh, we're able to really quickly get back to that person and close that ticket a lot faster than we really had before. Uh, again, you can see August, uh, the dip. Uh, I'm anxious to see again, uh, if we maintain a higher stat there. Um, on average, um, previous, before this new help desk, we were in mid eighties. Uh, but I don't think we were getting half the amount of ticket help. We were getting a lot of phone calls and various other ways to get ahold of us. And this has really helped us optimize the team, spread it around properly to the right people to get that answered faster. Instead of waiting, oh, hey, I gotta wait till someone's back at their desk or I gotta come see you, that kinda thing. So it's working really well. Um, so this, uh, service request versus incidents, and to kinda briefly explain the gist of why you want one or the other. Right now, with a request, that means I'm providing a service to someone. I'm not having to fix something. Um, but you can see this time, I don't have the previous year, uh, this is actually flipped. Uh, last year, we had a lot of hires, retirees, lots of staff movement. That increased a lot of our request numbers, a lot of move-ins as well with students and changing buildings, things like that adds request work for us. Um, now, uh, we're also not getting clear, you know, into the full year. So we're January, like I said, till now. Chromebook damage primarily is why the incidents are high. Um, that's mostly device repairs and screen repairs, things like that. And next slide here, I'll show you. Um, as you can see, sixty percent of the tickets are device and hardware. That's primarily Chromebook repairs and device breakage. Um, we're actually doing pretty well as far as the other statistics. Um, we do get a lot of apps and software throughout a year. Um, very little network issues this year, which I'm happy to see, very low. Um, I think last cycle, we were almost like six or seven percent. Um, a lot of power issues and things were causing issues for us that we were able to kinda tweak some things around, add a little redundancy. The big project you guys approved, uh, for network switching, uh, we're actually starting that process this month. Um, so that's gonna hopefully help some of those issues as well. So again, preventive maintenance. Uh, this, this is basically sharing requests for changes. So what that means is, you know, Tom calls me, I need a port in my office for my phone. Or a teacher in a classroom says, I need better wifi or I'm not, you know, something's not working on the internet. Um, we may need to make a change on our entire system to solve that. So like allowing a website, potentially could fall in that realm. Or, hey, we need phones fixed in this area of the building. They're old, they're breaking. Um, things like that have come into play. Updates to like certain backend gear that nobody sees, that's part of this. Um, you can see the little red sliver. Uh, I'm sure you read about CrowdStrike on the news, uh, with all the airports. Um, and then we had one other one, there were two of those, emergency changes this year. The other one was some issues we had with a, a firmware bug on our hardware in the closets that messed up our phones. So when you'd pick it up, you'd sound like a robot. Um, so that was actually our two emergency changes. And what that means is, we need it fixed within a couple hours, basically. Um, so all hands on deck. Uh, and having that low or no is where I want it, and I, I think we definitely accomplished that, so. Um, pending changes are stuff that's still on the list and that number is always growing, usually. So, I like to get that down as well. So, we'll get there. I think that's it. Yep.
I'm one of his most frequent customers. That's not being reported in the system, just FYI.
There's a separate slide.
Yeah, that is a totally separate presentation.
At the end.
Alright, first is, well, it's facilities, so I'll be talking about facilities and transportation. Um, just a brief overview, this is what makes up the facilities department. Um, here are the metrics I'm looking at. Um, kinda some similarities what Dave just talked about. But, um, on-time work performance, um, just kinda ratio of work orders to maintenance workers, you know, kinda go through those. Um, so in here, this is the on-time. Um, what's a little different in this one is if you look at the first one, um, basically December, what was reported. What's a little different in this one is if you look at the first one, um, basically December, what was reported and then in June. So our department for our work orders is transitioning. So we have switched over to the same system as tech is using, um, so Incident IQ. Uh, our, our department worked with that in end of February, March, just internally, just to kind of get used to it. They did their own work orders through that, and then we rolled that out to staff after spring break. So really, they only had it for probably seven weeks. And the other system, which is called School Dude, was still open, um, because we didn't close that. We didn't want to miss any things, we left them both open. So, you know, this data is a little skewed, um, but eighty-eight percent and then eighty-nine percent. Here are some of the metrics that are, you know, kind of continued, um, as far as what average monthly ratio of work orders to maintenance workers. So basically fifty-one work orders, um, per, uh, maintenance employee. Uh, this is just some of the square, um, footage. I mean, this doesn't change, this is just kind of see how our buildings are.
Is that a year, annual figure?
As far as the...
Fifty-one?
Monthly?
No, that's per month.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Monthly ratio. It actually went down a little bit. It was fifty-five, um, in the beginning of the year. I think that has a lot to do with having two different systems. Next one, just kind of here the, um, goals and where we were. So ninety-five percent on-time work order by the end of the school year. Um, as you can see, we didn't get that goal. Hopefully with one system, um, if we keep that, we'll get there. Uh, decreased backlog ratio, uh, five percent. Um, this is basically all of the work that we have to do in the district. Now, this has a lot to do with Warm, Safe, Dry, okay? And to decrease that by five percent, um, and we did decrease that by five percent. We're gonna continue decreasing that probably more and more. Now, as you heard from Tony, and I know I wasn't here, but as you heard from Tony, we're gonna spread that out a little bit, probably in Warm, Safe, Dry. Um, just because of where we're at with the budget. But really, that's the goal with the deferred maintenance is, right now, most of that focuses at HC Storm and the work that's going on there. Um, and that's really what drives that number down. Um, and next year, we already know it's gonna be, um, at Louise White and then some more site work or some site work done at, um, Storm as well. Develop and implement, uh, comprehensive indoor air quality that is still in process, that is not completed yet. Um, we're really looking specifically to start that with, um, temperature in each room. So basically, are we maintaining that temperature in every single classroom? So, you know, Alice Gusterson, for instance, you know, are all the classrooms within a range now. They're not all gonna be seventy-one degrees every single minute of the day, but we want to try to get that range so they stay there. So then you don't have that, you know, you walk in at sixty-six degrees and, or you walk in another room and it's seventy-five. Really get that piece where that's at. And then the other one is streamlined facility operations. So fully implement Incident IQ, facility management, and that will be done. So the work orders is done, that's implemented. The next piece that we'll roll out to the public, I'm hoping right after the Fourth of July, is, um, the rentals. So interior, so if a teacher needs to rent a space for something, or if an organization needs to rent a space. So we're gonna roll that out, um, hopefully, you know, by, like I said, after the Fourth of July. And then the last piece that we're still working on is our inventory piece. So all of the inventory, Dave talked specifically about his inventory, but we have, you know, anything from, you know, paper towels to, um, copy paper to changing a light bulb. So all the inventory in the entire district will also be in the system. Here's just an update on some current projects and upcoming. So the current is in that, you know, the, the first piece of design and bid for HC Storm improvements. That's well under the way, as you saw last night, um, that, um, Rob came and gave that. Unfortunately, I was literally probably, well, I was maybe landed by the time he was presenting. So it was a long travel day for me yesterday. And then addressing HVAC issues and solutions at JB Nelson, we are still in that process. We have dug into a lot of different things. We're still trying to figure out what exactly works at that school. And then the other one was updating evacuation, shelter and safety records. Um, as of today, it's done through three elementary schools, completely done. Um, we're kind of working, um, school to school. I'm not having a lot of hands do this, I'm having select people. So it's very straight and positioned in the same spot in all the schools, and that's kind of the goal for this. Um, so then if you walk into an HC Storm classroom and you look at it, or if you walk into Grace McWayne, it's in the same location. And it looks very much the same. So what this is, is how you, actually, I don't know if I can click on this, I could show an example, I don't have... Thank you, Holly. Because some of you weren't here. So that is what it's gonna look like, this is an example of Gusterson, so it all is the same. So over the years, you know, different, and I'm being serious here, different hand drawing, evacuation maps have been put. So this is, um, very, um, consistent throughout.
Most school districts, by the way, that I'm aware of, only indicate evacuation routes. There's no obligation necessarily to show shelter, um, but, um, so we're including this now, I think it's very valuable. And it's also color-coded along with the same color codes as our ELP. You'll notice that all the green indicators match the evacuation icon for the, the standard response protocol. And then the shelter is orange, so that... But I think it's pretty cool.
That's pretty cool, just, I don't want to open up a can of worms here or not, but is there something about active shooter on there?
Uh, there is lockdown, yes. And so depending on the nature of the, of the incident, you could either use what is called a hold or a secure or a lockdown.
Yeah, I'll get it done.
Should've done that, Brad.
I know.
He just had that alarm going the whole time.
Again, you, I mean, I don't have to go over every single one of these, but some of these you saw as an update last night, the LRCs, um, the flooring. Um, we are, um, targeting to get flooring done at Gusterson and JB Nelson, um, throughout next year and get it done by next summer. Uh, master facility plan is, is still in progress and I spoke about some other of these.
I have a quick question.
Yep.
You might've said it, but, um, I know, I remember last year, we were coming out of winter break and the high school had the issue. And just, I mean, are we doing steps to, I think it's the C wing where we were?
It is the C wing, yes.
That's our problem area.
Yes. Yep.
Just, if you could talk a little bit about what steps we're doing to...
What kind of problem was it?
Yeah, so it was, um, heating, we had a, some heating issues in C wing. Um, we had, basically at the high school, we had to extend, um, the closing of school one extra day. Um, because, uh, we had some failure in our heating system there, um, and it was very specific to C wing. Um, so C wing was built in ninety-five, um, it's thirty years old at this point. And, um, we are looking not only for the HVAC, HVAC's the number one thing that we need to get updated in there. But, um, it's kind of a, a domino effect. You're looking at Univents, and then if you're replacing the Univents, um, you need to look at the shell, you need to look at some interior things as well. Like to, you know, we're looking at putting a forced air system in there, so then you, it's very similar to this. So the air or the heat is spread out throughout the room instead of coming from one singular place. Um, but if you do that, um, you have to look at how your ceilings look, you have to look at what your flooring, you have to look at where you're gonna put all of that, so. Yeah, and current look at that is the HVAC would not get done in a single summer, um, because it's just too much work to do. So we're looking at how are we gonna phase that in and how are we gonna phase all of the other things that need to be done in there as well? And there's another piece of how do you phase that in and with the cost and how do you spread that out over fiscal years? Um, I'm very deep into that one, um, as we speak right now. I'm hoping that we could start a phase, um, in the summer of twenty-six, that is the hope. Um, so we have this and we are doing some changes currently through our maintenance staff and to hopefully not have that happen again. But you don't want to put a lot of money into something that you're gonna, you know, replace, but you also need it to run. You need heat and you need air. Well, you definitely need hi- heat. Now, it's nice to have air, but you have to have heat. So yes, C wing is the next large one. Louise White is planned, it's gonna roll out. I mean, we already, we planned Storm and Louise together, but, um, C wing is in the process of being planned right now.
Thank you.
Um, just, again, this is just a repeat, I know, I, I left these in here because I know we have new board members, just some challenges and opportunities. And then, um, one of the successes I'll talk about again, and it still is, is, um, our partnership with the GSF. That's our, we outsource our cleaning, our, um, nighttime cleaning service. Continuing to impress, um, really, we've been with them a little more than a year now. We're gonna go through our second summer of cleaning, um, for the summer. Summer's always ve- very difficult because you have to get in and get every single building deep cleaned. Um, they're on schedule and they can't even get into HC Storm yet because HC Storm's not even, at this point, that close for them to get into to clean. Some other, um, again, just continuing with, uh, Warm, Safe, Dry. And that is it. Before I move on to transportation, anything else on facilities?
I'm just gonna make a note, I want to thank Mark and Tony, um, there's an email to you inviting you, um, if you'd like to tour some of the construction sites this summer. Um, we've put a date out there and depending on how you reply, we'll treat it as such. I, I put some notes in there on how we would handle that, depending on how you reply, okay? So we'd love to take you around, thanks to making time for that.
Have there been any unexpected surprises with the projects at HC Storm?
No.
That's the million dollar question, literally.
There have been, but nothing that can't get worked through. So, yeah, there's some things that, you know, there's assumptions that were there. I mean, you don't really know until you open, open up the, you know, building. And it's, it's mainly about like, well, the plan says that the pipe was supposed to be there and now it's not there. So then you have to adjust and, you know, so it's supposed to be a four-inch pipe and it's a three-inch pipe and, you know, things like that. But, um, yeah, there's, there's change orders and then things like that, but that's why you have contingency budgets. And we are well within the contingency, um, plans that we had, um, allowances. So, yeah, nothing, like, s- some interesting paint colors, I would say. It's like, huh, they just left the, you know, left the brick the way it is, but just painted some lines and then paint the whole wall. So some of that kind of stuff, but plenty of those pictures and try to save all those. Now, the nice thing about this is you can take the notes because really Louise White is almost identical for next summer. So hopefully, we'll be a little bit of ahead. Um, we have some, some delays and some equipment that I'm a little concerned about. I get to the Fourth of July and I get a little more concerned because that's in my book when summer's over. I know that nobody likes to hear that, but that's my, my reality. Um, but we're working to kind of figure out how to, you know, get those pieces and... You need certain pieces in place for other trades to start working and we're starting to get there. But, um, and it does not really help when you're tuck pointing and roofing a building and it's ninety-seven degrees and heat index is a hundred and ten. That's very difficult, um, on all of those contracts. We're working through that. Transportation update, again, our department is very small. It's basically myself overseeing it and Dee, our transportation coordinator. And yes, we outsource our busing, um, so we don't need, um, the personnel. Here's just some metrics, um, where we're at. Basically, one hundred and ninety-three routes, that's how many buses, that's how many drivers. Fifty-four percent of our students, um, take the bus. And it's just shy of four hundred thousand miles traveled to and from school, so that's for the year. And there was eight total accidents this year, I'll get into these a little bit later. Um, here are our goals, uh, increase on-time performance to ninety-nine percent by the end of the school year, and we did that. So how we know this is, um, basically every school has access to this metric to put in any type of, you know, if the bus is late, if it's late to school, if it's late to a bus stop. Um, and if a parent calls in, we record it all in one spot. So all eight schools, um, have this and, does that say ninety-nine point three?
I can't read it.
Yeah, I know.
Yes, ninety-nine point three.
All right, good, my memory serves. So yes, we did definitely achieve this. Decrease the number of routes. Uh, we are literally working with this right now. So we look at routes over the summers, we tweak during the year, but we try to do any of the bigger changes over the summer. At this point, it looks like we can go down two routes. Now, that doesn't mean that it's entire, you know, bus that's gonna be done. It might be in a tier that could be changed a little bit. So you either have a single tier, that means there's one bus that runs either the high school back and forth, or you could have a double, uh, double tier or a triple tier. Triple tier is what you want. So then that same bus is taking high school kids, and then it's taking middle school kids, and then it's taking elementary students. That is the most efficient you can be. If we had more than one bridge, we'd probably be even more efficient, but we have some limitations. Um, and then the other one is achieve less than one accident per a hundred thousand miles. We did not do that, but I go to any accident that has students involved, so I'm there as a district, um, person. And really, we had three of those. So some of these accidents are, well, could be a bus hitting another bus, like running in the back of them, or a car backing into a bus. Any type of accident, you have to report. So I can say that there was three accidents that had students involved. And no injuries, nothing major at all. And then just some things that, basically, some of these projects, they're always in progress. Route efficiency, you're always trying to make the routes as efficient as they can be. Communication with Illinois Central, so Illinois Central does both our regular transportation and our special ed transportation. And we're continuing to try to make that communication as, as good as we can get it. Because if we get the information from Illinois Central, we can get it out to parents quickly. And that's the goal, because it's very difficult to talk to parents when they know more information than you do. And try to eliminate that as best we can. And really what this is, is it's that communication and communication, you know, with their manager to see, you know, what, what are they doing with their drivers? And do they have enough drivers and things like that? So we're working on getting that weekly update from them. We're not quite there yet, but, um, you know, actually Tony and I just had this conversation today about some other ideas, um, to work with Illinois Central on that. Um, the other one is, is, you know, working on some solutions and we're getting, we're getting this and it's just basically trying to get more providers, um, for some of our special needs students and homelessness. Is trying to figure out to work with other districts, because we're taking students either to another district or they're coming in here from another district. So working with those other districts to see what they're doing and to use their transportation as well. And then we talked about this earlier, about the student activity bus. Um, that is continuing to go very well, and it's just, really, it's getting the word out, um, more, to more and more kids that know that, you know, it's there. And again, like the, um, like facilities, transportation costs are continuing to go up. We're in the middle of a contract right now, um, so it's not, you know, pressing this now, but, you know, when we have to go back out to bid, um, you know, that is, that is a challenge. Retention of drivers, you know, once the drivers are here for the most part, you're fine. It's just getting that new group in every single year, because there's a lot of other, you know, re- really, it's, you know, it's Amazon, UPS, that's where a lot of the drivers go. Um, and then again, just, you know, changing enrollments, just making sure that we're, um, efficient in routes. Um, again, talked about Illinois Central being, um, our only transportation provider as far as for special ed and regular. And that's it.
Thank you.
Any questions for transportation?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This is not a topic that you were presented with last time, but I got really jealous of everybody else getting screen time. So I asked Tom if I could share some information. Actually, the... Actually, this is something that the public told us they wanted information on and wanted to see us expand our services in the communications and sharing our story with our community. So, surveys told us this, and they told us that they wanted to learn more about what we do and what is happening within our schools. So, I just put a few quick slides together, and I thought it would be really nice to land here in our presentation because it's a little bit more pictorial and a little less numbers. I think Tony's now going to put the cameras on me instead of leaving it on the presentation now, like I was hoping to do. So, priority two, foster inclusion and belonging, engagement through storytelling. We're trying to get more information out to our families, and one of the ways that we thought that we could do that is through increasing our posts and our social media. Of course, as you've heard in some of these other presentations say, the communications department is a lot more broad than just this. And, but I thought that this would be a good place for us to start in sharing some information with you about what we do in our, in our department. So, the, as you can see from this quick graph here, is that the number of posts that we did in the twenty-twenty-five school year versus the twenty-twenty-four school year almost doubled on Facebook and tripled on Instagram. Those are two main outlets in social media. We use Twitter at times, but it's more just to share some of the stories from within our buildings. If we see something that's going on or is getting a lot of traction, we will share it out. Twitter and through speaking with other communication directors throughout King County is a challenging place to get factual information and keep it clean for our families to continue to engage with us. So, we have eliminated that from being a, a main point of our outreach to our community and have focused on Facebook and Instagram. And you'll see that the results have been very positive. So, we have seen growth in our followers on Facebook and Instagram. Of course, more, a higher percentage of growth on Instagram because we have become far more active on Instagram. So, we're getting more attention. And then content interactions, and the print is very small there, but that's likes, comments, shares, saves. How much people are actually not just seeing, but doing something with our posts. On Facebook, we saw a huge increase of that. Again, about a seven, over seven thousand more interactions this year than last. And then on Instagram, again, we have tripled the amount that we were putting out there, and we've tripled the amount of interactions that we are seeing as well. I thought you'd want to see some of those high performers for us, and of course Craig is going to be super proud that the highest performing or the top performing post on Facebook is, of course, the marching band and their successes, winning first place out of ten bands in the Class Two A, Best General Effect in Class Two A. So, you can see there that we had a lot of performance on this from four hundred likes or loves on that, seventeen comments. And when people share our posts, that reach becomes far more, which includes kind of in that metrics of how something has become a top performer. And on Instagram, Tom's really mad that I talked about this, but a weather-related post was actually one that people reacted to the most because people want to know if we're going to have school, so...
That comes down for them.
Yeah. Yes. There's, and, and it's very, these, a lot of reactions can be very polar. Some people really like when their kids, we are opening our schools for their kids to come in, and some people aren't really happy that we are making their kids stand out at the bus stop. Because we make them do that, it's not a choice that they can make, but they can also choose not to send their kids. But this, that's a very, again, Instagram is very picture. We try to do the best that we can to stay on brand with all of our posts. And so, you'll see that if you follow along with us, and we'd appreciate it if all of you did, like our Facebook and Instagram pages and follow us. But the most liked, so that's just that one metric, was you'll see that we're very proud, our community is very proud of Rachel Agro, who designed the community flag. And then we did a highlight on her actually making that mural within the halls of Batavia High School. So, that was five hundred eighty-seven likes on that post on Facebook. But the Homecoming Parade, again, very pictorial group, saw a ton of positive comments and likes, two hundred fifty-one likes on our Homecoming Parade slideshow. So, that's what I wanted to share, I wanted to kind of close out today, and so I put my own presentation last. But some sweet pictures of our students and what we do, what we do. So, it is thanks to the administration and the board for allowing Amy Nelson to be a part of the communications department. Over this past year, we just had our, our one-year anniversary of working together as a team. She's the one that's going out, get these pictures or soliciting these stories from our families. We also have an awesome summer intern that does a lot of those celebration posts of the different groups within, whether it's a Pride Month or those, they do all of those graphics for us. We're giving credit to them for their work, so we're very proud of, of these changes. There'll be more to report again in the future of the other things that we're doing to storytell the great things, and some of the things that we need or we are going to be working on moving forward with our district, so.
All right, so board, great questions, appreciate all the dialogue, the interaction. That is your, your ones first attempt, I guess, at satisfying what the strategic plans call for in terms of accountability reporting. So, that, that is almost a year in rap for fiscal year twenty-five. And I think as we move forward, you see that we, you've heard from our buildings, our principals and their SLT leaders, and then you're hearing from us. I think probably the best way to summarize it is, we have a lot of good stuff happening, a lot of good work happening, but also realize that there's more to be done. And I think there's a, you know, there's really good dialogue about like, some questions that are hitting some of those targeted areas that we're talking about. And so, that's the work that will continue. As we move forward, one, the comprehensiveness of this presentation, I think, really is fitting based on the budgetary conversation we had last night with the board that Tony walked you through. Because if you look at your charge at, per your own board policy and board governance, that's what the one hundred thirty million dollar plus operating budget of this school district that you approved for us encompasses, everything you saw tonight, right? And then some. So, that's the year review. I guess I'll turn it over to you, Craig.
Does anybody have any other final questions or comments?
Just thank you for your presentations, that's a lot of information. You answered a lot of questions in detail, so appreciate everybody, all the hard work that went into putting that together.
Ditto.
Ditto, 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 ditto. All right, unless there is anything else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
First by Katie, second by Raquel. The all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is now nine nineteen PM, and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Good job, good job.
If I don't see or talk to you...